Adrienne Brightfeller, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, December 4th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the Railroad Quiet Zone Study.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for December 4th, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Pro Tem Wethel?
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh? It looks like, Eric, if you can hear me, it looks like Council Chambers is still muted. So I'm not sure if the mayor is able to hear us. Are you able to unmute that?
I just unmuted.
Okay, thank you.
Adrienne, this is Mayor Kavanaugh. I can hear you now.
Great, thank you. Council members Farber?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Resnick?
Here.
Brusell?
Here.
Sprank?
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan?
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell?
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is the Railroad Quiet Zone Study. I will turn it over to Project Manager Steve Sampson-Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members. We're here to speak with you tonight on the Railroad Quiet Zone Study update. So far, it's been a joint effort, working with me and the Engineering Department, Assistant City Engineer Bob Schizel. We've partnered with ECIA and Chandra Rivada, so we appreciate his help on this effort. And then we'll let the consultants talk to you about, just mention the surrounding communities that we're working with. One thing that's important to understand about the Railroad Quiet Zone update, as we remember over the past year, Canadian Pacific, which is a Class 1 railroad that serves Dubuque, has merged now with the Kansas City Southern Railroad. Statistics that came out during that environmental impact study done by the Surface Transportation Board predicted that trains will grow to 18 trains per day by 2027. That was Canadian Pacific's numbers. So, plus, we also have Canadian National operating as a second Class 1 railroad in Dubuque. So, train traffic is expected to get busier in Dubuque. Besides quiet zones and creating a peace of mind for residents that are bothered by the train noise, quiet zone improvements also relate to result in traffic crossing or rail crossing, safety improvements. So this is a good effort, both for peace of mind and being quiet, but also safety improvements are an important part of that process. So, with us tonight is two designers from Anderson Bogart, Brian Jansen and Jacob Sprangler. I'll ask them to step up in a minute. Tonight, we'll just be providing a general update. No final recommendations yet at any specific location, so we have some good progress that we've made so far. We'll share that with you, answer any questions you may have. After this evening, we'll start working with stakeholders that are impacted possibly by safety improvements that are being considered along each crossing, so we'll reach out to them. We'll provide, put some information out from our Public Information Office if people want to ask questions. So we'll go through that, and then we'll likely return in early February to make final recommendations for safety improvements at specific locations. That's our goal. And then working with Chandra and Terry Goodman and others, we'll hopefully be ready, at least from a study perspective, to pursue any railroad safety or quiet zone eligible grants that come out by March. So that's our general timeframe. With that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Jansen of Anderson Bogart. So I'm the project manager on this study. As the project manager, I'm just overseeing the study. I'm not doing all the detailed work. Jacob here has been doing a lot of the heavy lifting on the study, so I'm gonna let him actually deliver the presentation to you all. I also got a few more years of experience in gray hair than he does, so he could probably use the experience more so than myself. This is a pretty technical topic. We're gonna try to just keep it very high level. We'll be here all night if we get into the details, so we'll try to keep it on track here. But if you have technical questions later, we're gonna try to keep the presentation fairly short, give enough time for some questions at the end. So with that, Jacob's gonna dive into the presentation here.
All right, thank you. And we're glad to be here with you again, kind of as Brian said. So kind of just a little background on what we're gonna kind of go through today, kind of five simple steps here. We're just gonna do some background. I know some of you were with us a couple of weeks ago or a month ago when we presented to DMATs over at their office. We'll give you a little background on quiet zone and how that all works. We're gonna give you a little summary of what we've done in the study and what the study covers. And we don't have any final recommendations, but we can kind of show you how we've got it set up and what the end goal of this is going to be. And then lastly, like Steve kind of mentioned, there's some final steps of what we need and what we're gonna be doing moving forward. So kind of first of all, for those that weren't with us before, quiet zone, what is it? At a high level, basically, federal regulations currently require that trains use their horn at all public crossings as a matter of public safety. So they're required to do so, and they have a very specific pattern. Well, quiet zone is basically a location that the federal rules allow to be exempted from that rule. So the federal rule says you have to use your horn unless conditions one, two, and three are met. One of these crossings or a group of crossings that meet those exceptions are considered a quiet zone. So it's a location where horns aren't routinely used, which means on a regular basis. Now, if there's emergency circumstances or unusual circumstances, you might still hear horns. So that's an important thing to keep in note, but basically, that's all we're talking about here, is a single crossing or group of crossings that are exempt from needing to use their horn for everyday purposes. So, just kind of at a really high level, how does one achieve a quiet zone? Well, the horns are there, obviously, to, as a matter of public safety. So it gives you that audible warning that a train's coming, and if someone's on the tracks or someone's near the tracks, they know, hey, let's stay off of it. So you can imagine, if we get rid of that horn, it might be, you know, perceived as a noise reduction for the community, but at the same time, it's gonna increase that risk level at that crossing because you can no longer hear that train's coming. So overall, what a quiet zone is trying to do is you're implementing additional safety measures to take that risk and offset it back to a level that it would be, you know, before you took away the train horns as a high-level thing. So there's two really large, I guess, paths to that, through the federal regulations. And the first option is basically, there's like pre-approved improvements and things that you can do everywhere that Federal Rail has studied and said, these work, we know they work. And the advantages of that is you can install those everywhere, you don't have to apply to anybody, you do it on your time, with your funding, or you look for some other funding opportunities, you implement them, you just send notices out and say, hey, we did this, we met all your requirements, we're gonna do it. Now, if you can't do that everywhere and you can't use these pre-approved, you know, because of space requirements or stakeholder input, you know, there's still other options for you, but they're not necessarily pre-approved. So that's when we're gonna get into a little bit more technical study. And the disadvantages of that are, you kind of have to get approval from the Federal Rail to say, yes, this works and we're okay with it. Obviously, we know that that can involve quite a bit of time, and it's not really at your pace at that time. You're kind of at the mercy of federal review. So those are the general two paths we'll be talking about and kind of advantages to both. So just to kind of hit a little bit more on that risk we were talking about, the federal government has a method that they use to determine, you know, a risk number, so they try to quantify how risky a crossing is. So they've got a model set up that kind of takes into factor a whole bunch of different things, everything from the number of tracks you got at a crossing to how many trains are going over the crossing, how many vehicles are going over the crossing, you know, how many tracks there are, things of that nature, what speed is everybody going at over these crossings. So they kind of all go into this little batch and they create a risk number. They put that into their model, and then they publish a risk number that you can go and look up for every crossing, every public crossing that is, that they come up with. So each crossing has that, and if we were talking about a group of crossings, because a quiet zone could be one crossing or it could be a whole bunch in a row, if you take that group of crossings, it's the same idea for a quiet zone. You're just gonna take each individual crossing and average it together to get your number for the whole zone overall. So we'll kind of get a little bit more into detail with that in a little bit. But essentially, you can see in some of those tables, the one that's listed under Dubuque, those are just a couple of those crossings that you have in your city right now. And if we were to do a minimum improvements, which we'll talk a little bit about later, those would be your risk numbers that we're looking at. So basically, what these pre-approved improvements will do, will take some of those numbers and lower those. It'll say, you're taking your risk and you're allowed to reduce that risk by a certain percentage because we realize you've made safety improvements. The table on the right is a table, it's a federal threshold, so part of the rules say, we talked about getting that risk number below a certain threshold or the risk before you took away the horns. Well, that number that's circled in red is the current risk number that the federal government has said, on average, you know, this is our, this is our average risk threshold that we want quiet zones to be below as of right now. So that number right now is about 15,000, so you can kind of see at least half of those crossings in Dubuque. If you were to make minimum improvements, it's not enough to get below that number. So you can kind of see also, take note, that some of those numbers from 2006 to now have changed. So we'll talk about how that, you know, involves risk and the possibility that that might, number might switch in the future. So just because it's there now doesn't mean it's gonna stay there. So, again, the goal here being to make enough improvements or to average out that risk for all the crossings in your zone below the threshold number or the number that we talked about if horns were still there. If you hear me talk about a little bit this presentation, we love shortening letters and words into short phrases, but we talk about SSMs and ASMs. And all that means is basically, we talked about that list that the federal government has put out that says, we've pre-approved these improvements for you to use on a general basis. You know, you can plug it into this location and this location, and it's got an established effectiveness that it'll get for you. And some of those that we'll walk through here, you know, a temporary closure of a crossing for a part of a day, if you're only gonna silence horns for a part of a day. You've got a four quadrant gate system, you've got a two quadrant gate system with your medians at it. And then, of course, you've got always the option to grade-separate it or close it to reduce it, risk to zero, because you're getting rid of it. Anything that's not on that list, if it partially meets it, it's not on the list. It goes under alternative safety measures, and that's what we had talked about before. You start getting into needing engineering study, you have to apply to the federal government to say, we believe that it's going to be effective, and this is why for them to review. So, just gonna kind of give you a little visual on what we're talking about here. To be included in a quiet zone, we said those numbers assume that you made baseline improvements everywhere. And this is example of Fifth Street, just down the street from here. The minimum requirement's gonna be basically a two quadrant system, which means you can see the two gates we got there. You know, I got it in two out of the four, basically, lanes that approached the intersection, approaching. Then you've got some power-out indicators. It's basically a light on the cabinet that can tell the train if the power's out, so they know the gates aren't gonna work. And then they have circuitry that's in the tracks that can always give you a constant warning time, so it doesn't matter how fast the train's going, it's gonna tell you it's gonna be there in 20 seconds, regardless of its speed. So those are the minimum requirements, and we're saying every crossing has to have that. So if you go up to 12th through 16th, 16th Street right now, there's nothing out there but just lights. So just to even be included in the quiet zone, you're looking at a minimum investment of those safety features as a baseline. And like we showed in the table, just because we install that everywhere doesn't mean it's enough to reduce it far enough, but that's your starting point that we're talking about. Then we'll go through just a couple of your pre-approved methods that the government has said you can use without need for approval. This is an example of a four quadrant system, so it's similar to the two quadrant, but you've got gates also on the receding lanes instead of just the approaching lanes, so you can see all four corners are gated. So when the gates are down, it's impossible to get across that intersection because it's all gated. These are typically, besides grade separation, probably one of the most expensive options that's out there now, both upfront and reoccurring. So it's a good financial, it's a big financial investment and can also come with some reoccurring maintenance costs, as we'll see. So they're not quite as common out there, but they are in use for areas. You can see in an urban area such as Cedar Rapids, I think this one's located in, where you have a lot of densely located, you know, businesses and things really close to it. Here's another example, which is your two quadrant system. So you can kind of see, this one plays really nice with the minimum requirements. You got the two gates on it, but then you've got these medians or channelization devices on it. So in this example, the median, you can see one plus of this one is, you know, it's just the cost, if you've already got the gates there, it's adding medians, which can be one of the more cost-efficient options. You put that median in the middle, but you can see the drawback is it's gonna have to be a little bit long, it's gonna be a long median, you know, 60 to 100 feet. So if you're in a dense area downtown and you've got access points within that area, you're gonna have to close or relocate those accesses out of the way. So you can see, this might be a good option for some instances, but maybe downtown, it gets a little bit trickier when you've got densely spaced properties. The channelizers on the left side are, might be a more cost-efficient solution, but we've talked to many cities and I haven't had one respond to me yet and said that if they could go and do it again, that they would stick with that option. So we don't recommend that one because it's really easy to get run over and it's a maintenance nightmare. But it is an option out there that I have seen used before. And then one thing that's really tough is these risk numbers aren't calculated for pedestrian and bike facilities because each facility is just completely different. You know, there's not a good way that they modeled it, so there's not a end-all, be-all rule that says this is what you have to do. But if there is one that's within, you know, it's within close proximity to a crossing or it's within your quiet zone, you're also taking away the horns for these pedestrians and bicycles that are crossing the tracks. So you are required to go out with Federal Rail, the railroad, state railroad, to go and look at these, and you have to deal with these on a case-by-case basis, and whatever the team that's out there says goes. So there's no hard requirement, just besides whatever this team says you have to do. So a couple examples of some suggestions that come out of these improvements, you can see on the left there is an example of a trail. It's kind of next to a railroad crossing already, but you can kind of see how we realigned that crossing to be more or less perpendicular to the tracks. And actually, you can see there's fencing on both sides of it, so it actually forces the bike peds and peds to stay on the trail where we actually anticipate them and want them to cross, to kind of channelize them. Similarly, on the right side, there's two crossings down in Muscatine on a pretty, I think it's a similar line, if not BNSF, right along the river down there. And they've got what we call like a Z-crossing. So you can see, just by the geometry of the crossing itself, the person that wants to go up and cross the tracks is gonna have to look both ways to see and look for trains just by the nature of that ramp. So you can kind of see in both of them, one uses actual sidewalk alignment, the other one has gates and Z fences, so you have to zigzag through the fences to make sure you look both ways to do it. So these are two common items that might come out of a diagnostic review team for a pedestrian crossing. So if we've got a couple of those in town, or you were thinking of, or you thought about adding one, you know, stuff like this might be something that's typical of an improvement. So that's kind of the basic background overall on what the train horn is and what kind of improvements we're talking about throughout this. So with that knowledge, we kind of went into the study, and we were approached by DMATs to complete the study form, and it kind of includes all the communities from Piastah, Dubuque County, City of Dubuque, and East Dubuque came on as a late partner with us. So we're kind of doing something similar in all those entities, and a lot of them butt up against each other, so we're working for a couple areas where they might involve shared quiet zones that are, you know, from one end to another and things of that nature. So they approached us and asked, hey, can you guys study for us? How do we, how do we create a quiet zone? How do we go about it? How, what would you recommend be our best path there? Can you help us identify what a good path forward might be to reach this goal? So that's what we did. Our goal is basically to develop a recommended safety improvement plan for the DMATs entities to be able to take that and make future plans for those improvements and start planning ahead as a good jumping-off point. So generally, you know, on the project, we wanted to identify, you know, what crossings are we dealing with and what improvements can we make to these crossings? And then kind of with that, we ran different scenarios that we'll talk about in a little bit, and from that, we're able to kind of formulate recommendations and say, hey, we should go after this improvement, or you should really focus on this location because it's really dangerous, things of that nature. So you can kind of see an overall map of the area that we're studying there. So all the different colors basically just represent different zones that we've come up with. You've got a list of all the crossings within the city, the public crossings within the city of Dubuque there on the right, two different railroads responsible for those. You can kind of see how it stems all the way over to Piastah, all the way up and down the Mississippi River and into the east side of the river. So, all said, we got about 30 crossings we looked at, which is quite large for this type of study. We're dealing with four different public entities, two different states, and two different divisions of Federal Rail or regions of Federal Rail. So it's been a little bit of a logistical nightmare trying to get everything together, but to bring it to light with that, we've got all kinds of spurs and stuff going over, so it's been a real challenge. So the first part of it was just to see, you know, how does the federal government want to enforce the rules, or how do they, you know, understand the rules and how can they clarify those for us? Because there's a lot of unique situations we're dealing with here. So I won't try to, try to not go too in-depth with these requirements, but again, kind of goes back to the requirements. We tried to determine, hey, where does it make sense to break these up at? And the federal government has a couple guidelines and rules regarding that. They say it has to be a certain length. They say a half-mile long a track, so you're kind of looking a quarter-mile on both sides. And all that means is basically, they're pretty much required to start using their horns a quarter-mile in advance of a crossing anyway. So if you didn't include it, you'd be using your horn through that crossing anyway for the next one. So it makes sense to require that length requirement. Any private pedestrian crossings we had talked about that fall between it have to be included and have to be addressed accordingly. And then on the outsides, you basically have to keep going until you get to a point where there's no other crossings within a quarter-mile for that same reason. So we're gonna talk about, like, through downtown Dubuque, 12th to 16th are all very closely spaced. So, and once you do one, you know, you kind of have to do all of them at the same time just because they're, they're all right next to each other. So that's just gonna be a federal requirement coming down that we have to deal with. We've separated by primary railroad, just to make it easier to enforce and have to deal with down the road. And spurs and things like that are treated separately as their own quiet zones, so. And then for paper, reporting purposes, it's easier for everybody to enforce it across state lines, so we like to separate it by states as well. There'll be a couple crossings within the zone. A couple of them are shown in black dots that we'll get to a little bit later, but they're either more than a quarter-mile away from an outside of a zone or not in between two. So we studied some of them and just found out, hey, these aren't eligible, there's nothing we can do at them. So, the first step kind of we did is we went through and looked at some of these crossings and formulated some concepts to be able to present and talk to engineering staffs and the railroad entities about. And we kind of drafted up what we thought might work good at some of these crossings. So we gathered all those, we organized an onsite meeting with Federal Rail, the railroad that's responsible for the particular crossing, the state DOT, and we actually met onsite last April. And we got everybody onsite for these diagnostic reviews that we talked about, and we went and we went to each one of these crossings and evaluated each one for different, you know, possible improvements and what would be required. So the Engineering Department asked if we just take you through two or three of these to kind of show you our thought process and see how it works. So this first location is 11th Street, just downtown here. So first step, we'd want to evaluate the site conditions. There's no accesses anywhere close, so I'm really eyeing a median here because I have the space, like we talked about. The existing signals are in really good shape and they appear to meet the minimum requirements that the federal regulations say. The road was recently reconstructed, and that risk number, if you look back to that table, is one of the higher risks on that list. So all those signs are saying, hey, this is a good location that we can, we can make some safety improvements at. So if we evaluate that list of pre-approved treatments, you could close it, or you could grade-separate it. I don't know if that's the most cost-efficient option, it might be the safest option, but there's a lot of stuff on either side of it. I don't know if that's gonna be the realistic option here. So you could do a one-way conversion and move one of the gates to the other side, so you cross both of your approach lanes, that would work. But again, you're kind of messing up the traffic patterns there and making it harder to get around. You could put a four quadrant upgrade in, that would work. You're looking at a significant financial contribution for that kind of improvement. Or in this case, you can do a two quadrant gate with median systems, which is the picture on the right. Looks like it's gonna fit pretty well. So with that, we kind of, we kind of took all that and looked at it and, you know, kind of checked all those boxes off there. And on this case, you know, we might, we might recommend, hey, this is a perfect location to reduce risk, you don't have to touch the signal equipment, you can just go and put in the medians, you know? So that's a, let's say, a 75% to 80% risk reduction at that crossing just by putting in those medians. So this is one place where we might call it a slam dunk, or one of those locations where you're getting a lot of bang for the buck, you're making a lot of safety improvement, and it's fairly straightforward to do so. You'll find out, there's some other locations such as 7th Street where it's a little bit more difficult to meet these requirements. So it becomes really important that if, to do as much as you can, especially at those locations where you have the power to do so. At this site, you know, we can look at it just up, down the street from where we just were. There's multiple access points within 50 feet of the tracks, which means all those would have to be closed or relocated, and based on the properties, that's not gonna be possible, just because that's their only access point. There's a DOT bridge right next to it, so if we put in gates, it's gonna start hitting the, hitting the bottom of that bridge, so I don't know if that's gonna be possible either. The existing signals aren't compliant, so we're gonna have to replace those, so they have all the warning systems and stuff that are required. So at minimum, we're gonna have to replace both of those that are out there. And this particular location also has several projects, some complete street things planned by the Engineering Department, I believe, for pedestrians, things like that in the future. So it might not be exactly known what the ultimate solution's gonna be, so maybe it's better to do an improvement that can work with those in the future. So again, we can evaluate the options. You could close it. Well, this provides a really direct link right across the street to downtown, so maybe that's not ideal. Again, one-way conversion or closer. Right now, there's not really a whole lot of connecting streets to be able to do that, but could be in the future. We talked about the problems with the four quadrant upgrade, and we talked about the problems relating to driveway spacing for medians. So you can see on that list, we're coming up, and this is gonna be a challenging location because none of those are really working too well. So if we kind of talked about recommended actions, can we close this or maybe convert it to a pedestrian access so we can still get across for those, for those people to downtown? Can we make additional safety improvements at other locations, do what we can at this location to meet our requirements, and reduce that average risk at other locations? You know, can we really knock out, knock out other locations out of the park? So that's things that we would, we would look at here. So again, our recommendations aren't final, but here we might say, hey, let's make sure we get the minimum safety improvements and do what we can, and then let's try to get credit at other locations to try to help out with that. And then 16th Street, just up from the planned overpass at 14th. This is a really interesting one because we can look at it today. There's a couple driveways in close proximity, existing signals need replaced. The big kicker here is there's a lot of redevelopment, park plans basically on all three out of the four quadrants here that aren't exactly known what exactly is gonna happen. So how do we plan for that? What improvement can be done that accommodates future designs? You know, a median, you might put it in, and it might be really restrictive on where you can access the future park and properties because you can't go close to it. In this case, you can kind of see, we've drawn in a four quadrant system because it doesn't have a whole lot of impacts outside of that actual specific location. It maintains access to the property on the northwest corner, which is a pretty essential access from what I understand over there, and it provides you some freedom to move access points and things on the other three quadrants in the future. So we figured that that might be the least restrictive method that you could do there that's not closure or something like that. So that's kind of what we came into mind here when we're thinking about planning for this future lot here. We talked about maybe like at 15th, you know, since it's so closely spaced, maybe that provides an opportunity for closure at the less busy street, or maybe a future possibility, if it's a park, to close it to vehicles and do what we saw previously in Muscatine with just a pedestrian crossing, if we're gonna have events and things like that there. So just things to kind of consider with that park plan and how we kind of incorporated that into our study. So we took all these different ideas from these diagnostic reviews, and, and we kind of went back to the office and we kind of wanted to formulate that quiet zone plan. What would we do? So we kind of went through the steps. We're gonna evaluate safety first, you know? What are the safety concerns exist? If I pretend that we're not trying to get a quiet zone here, there's stuff we need to do here just because it's inherently dangerous already, you know? The geometry's not good, there's not adequate pedestrian facilities here. What can we do, pretending that we're not even thinking about a quiet zone? We need to address that, for sure. You know, regulations may not require improvements everywhere, maybe we've got a minimum requirement Maybe we've got a minimum requirement met somewhere, but does that mean we should take away the horns and not do anything there? Well, you might get a quiet zone. I just increased risk at that one crossing. So I don't know that that's necessarily a great idea either, you know? It's just if you're thinking about it that way. And we kind of talked about evaluating feasibility. So which locations are your big risky locations and where can we really do the most good and really hit hard? Which locations are slam dunks or really easy or straightforward to go after that if we can, we should try to make improvements there because they're easier or straightforward than other locations? Which ones should be targeting for greatest economic and safety benefit? And then we evaluate susceptibility, you know? We talked about how those numbers can change. Those risk numbers and the thresholds are subject to change. How much reduction is enough to be safe from possibly losing that in the future if federal regulations get adjusted, you know? What happens if vehicle traffic or train traffic increases? If the trains triple, that's going to increase your risk. So we can run those numbers today. We should probably account for what happens when those trains triple. So we ran some scenarios with that too to kind of provide a little bit of information to say, this might work today, but if it increases in the future, it's not going to fly. And then the improvements themselves, how durable are they? What kind of reoccurring costs are we going to have to incur every year for their railroad to maintain it? If they put in those channelizers, how often are we going to have to go out there and replace it because we're getting hit by snowplows and vehicles leaving the travel lane? If we don't build these pre-approved improvements everywhere, what are the chances that that risk number does change and now we have to come back and make more improvements? And that's an important point I want to call out is if you make those improvements everywhere, we talked about all these risk numbers. While you're reducing that risk, if you have one of those everywhere, you don't even have to worry about the risk numbers as far as the federal government is concerned. But in instances where you can't make it work, you're going to have to calculate it and that number changes. So how are we going to make sure we get far enough below that that it's their lasting impact? And then lastly, we wanted to evaluate cost. Obviously, you can do all these improvements up top, but it's going to be really expensive on the top end, all the way down to a very minimalistic approach on the bottom. So you can kind of see two example tables just overarching there. We put together like four options, let's say, for each quiet zone. So the option A would be, you know, we did improvements everywhere. They're the most durable, which usually also means they tend to be more costly. Improvements all on the top for, so Plan A, you can see for CP2, we're looking at 2.4 as a baseline just for the railroad, you know, and immediate street related improvements that we've talked about here. All the way down to Option D, which is like today, it was the absolute minimum that could be done to get this to meet federal requirements. So you can see between the two options, there's a big price difference in the middle. So most of our recommendations typically come in the B and C range where it's kind of a mixture of the two, you know, options, the best of both worlds. So you can kind of see we're comparing the two risks of both of those quiet zones, 15 to 10 and 15 to 7. Let's say CN2 in this location, you can see from a previous table, we kind of showed that federal threshold. It was never ever below 7,000. So that might be a location where we'd say, hey, we've got enough buffer built into you. If you do this, you're probably sitting pretty good. So we've got a couple of those drafted up, but again, we're kind of waiting on some public input to kind of build into that. And when it comes down to the end, our final product, we're going to have a table that kind of looks similar to this. That kind of shows you what quiet zone we're looking at, what's there now, what we're looking at improving. And then on a scale of one to 10, we're trying to identify, you know, how important is it for us to go after this crossing? You know, if I see a two on there, okay, we can do it, but it's not really a need to be a priority list. You see a couple on there listed at 10, that's going to make a huge difference. We really want to go after those. So again, we've got some initial concepts. We're going to be looking to include some public input in these recommendations. And then I guess some of the next steps that I'll get into, I think we're looking for, between us and the engineering department, kind of concurrence on what you see in the report, the draft report and what we've seen so far. General concurrence and thumbs up that, you know, we're good to proceed with getting some public input on this project as it currently stands and generally understanding of what's happening, especially if, you know, calls and we have concerned property owners giving a ring in to help us answer those questions. We want to incorporate that public input into the study and make sure that doesn't, you know, change some of the things that we're suggesting and we want to incorporate that. So if it's, you know, adopted in the future, that we're aware of some of these issues in the report moving forward and knowing, you know, what we've kind of chatted about or what's been expected. We'll submit this in January, February timeframe back to DMATS again to disseminate to their members. And from there, the city will be able to determine, how do we want to proceed? Do we want to follow these recommendations? How do we want to kind of move forward? And with that, they can apply for these grant programs and start lining up funding if they so desire. And then what we'll do, if they tell us what you want to do, that first step in the actual process is going to be to make a notice to the railroads and the state that, hey, we're intending to make a quiet zone here. We're starting the process. If you've got comments, let us know. So that's kind of the first step on the actual physical paper trail. And if the city so chooses, we will draft that up and help with that per the federal regulations. And did you want to, Brian, mention a little bit about some of the funding opportunities that are available to the city?
Yeah, before I dive into that, I was just going to show this table again. So it's not showing up real well on the screen here, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I just picked up on when I was looking at this that probably should hit on a little harder. So as far as the phasing goes, so there's a column there that we got initial listed several times. So the one thing that Jacob talked about is, one of the requirements is if the crossings are within a quarter mile, they all have to be included in that quiet zone. So the first, the blue one right there, that is the CN2. So that's all the crossings on CN rail line and those are all within a quarter mile of each other. So there's three of them that are listed on here. So those would all have to be included. All the improvements would have to be constructed and you wouldn't be able to implement that quiet zone until all those are done. So the second one, the red ones, all but two have initial listed. There's two that have future. So you can see all the red dots on there. Maybe on your computer you can see a little better, but so crossings 22 and 23, those are Hawthorne Street and Lincoln Avenue. Those are clear up on the north end. Those are far enough away from all those other downtown crossings that they can be added on to that quiet zone later. But all those downtown crossings have to be included all at the same time. So you have to make improvements at all those downtown crossings before you can have a quiet zone at, let's say, East 7th Street. And then you could tack on Hawthorne Street and Lincoln at a later date. Or you could start at Lincoln and Hawthorne and add on those downtown crossings later. But whatever your priority is, it kind of sounds like the downtown area is probably maybe a little more higher priority, but I just wanted to point that out real quick. So as far as the possible funding opportunities, I'm not going to get into a lot of the details, but talking with Steve and Chandra, they met internally as a group last week and a few other staff members. They went through some of the strategy behind what to apply for. We're going to provide some more information to them later, some cost benefit analysis potentially. But these are just the three big ones that are out there as far as rail improvements go. First one is this Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Program. It stands for Chrissy. This is a big national federal program. I think I wrote down, I don't think the notice is out yet for this year, but last year they awarded $1.4 billion. Davenport had a pretty similar project where they rewarded about $2.5 million. And this is just a real broad program ranging from various safety improvements. The next one, as the name implies, is a rail crossing elimination program. So that's actually if you remove a crossing and close the street at that crossing. Maybe one or two crossings that you might consider applying for that grant. Davenport received a big grant last year for $7.7 million. And then the last one is this Federal Aid Railroad Highway Grade Crossing Section 130 Program. So this one's a pretty common program. I know Dubuque's gotten awarded that in the past at some different crossings. So this is awarded by the, it's, sorry, administered by the DOT. The big thing to note about that third one is quiet zones are not eligible for that program. However, if you, since we're not really implementing a quiet zone, we're just studying the feasibility of it, it's still important that you apply for that program. And, you know, there's no saying that we're going to implement a quiet zone. So it's still important to go after those safety improvements if you can. Okay, so it looks like that's the last slide. I'm going to open this up for questions. I know we threw a lot of information at you. It's very technical. It's hard to stay away from the technical side, but it's not exactly the most exciting topic either, so I'd love to answer any questions.
Well, speak for yourself. I think it's pretty exciting.
Okay.
No, I, the multi-dimensional issues are really interesting and whether it's dealing with acuity of risk and the scenarios of current versus predicted rail traffic, it's a lot to digest. Yeah, well, thank you. Open it up for discussion, Mr. Sprink.
Thank you. I have a question. I know dealing with the railroad is not an easy subject. So theoretically, we decided to go with the median idea at, what was it, 7th Street, I believe was the slide?
11th, maybe.
11th Street. Let's just throw that one out. How long is the paperwork process to get approval with them, for example? Like, any idea how long that takes? I know it takes a while.
It's nice that this program or the way the federal rules are listed, it's actually to help out cities and instances such as that where you've got pretty much all the signal equipment already ready to go. So there's a lot of cities out there that have gates and stuff that are already compliant and the federal government's trying to help the city out by saying, hey, if you do that extra mile and put in those medians, you know, technically you don't even need the railroad to do any work. You just have to get them to allow you to come on to work within the right of way on property. They don't have to maintain any of those things and it's not really a hazard to their trains moving through. If you, if their gates are far enough away and you put the medians in like you're supposed to, it's not a big deal for them. So it's set up to say that, hey, if we have some of these instances where it's already set up, that's why they said if we went the route where you don't have to apply to FRA and this and that, they don't even really need to, you know, it's made for the cities to try to help them to be able to go through that and not run into stalemates that are rail departments. And I can tell you that after going through the diagnostic review with all the railroads out here, most of them seem at least open to working with you. I know there's some instances where we've run into where they're very, you know, they'll tell you, we don't want quiet zones because it's less safe, things like that. But we ran into a couple of entities at CP and CN here at least seemed receptive to working with you to help make some of those improvements. So.
Why don't you just run through the notice of intent and process?
So when we'd be ready to submit the notice of intent, which is basically just a letter that says, this is our general plan. We're going to make these improvements this way and under this letter of the code, we're trying to get a quiet zone. Basically, from that time on, you send it out. They've got 60 days to provide comments to say, we don't like this or we think we should adjust this. After that period's over, you know, you make the changes to your plan, you go and you implement it. Now whether that's next year because it's just a median or whether you need funding to go and get all this other equipment and stuff done and it's in five years. You get the improvements done, then there's going to be another similar notice. In this case, it's called the Notice of Establishment that says, hey, we did the plan. We put it in place. You now have 21 days and 21 days, you're going to be federally required to stop using your horns. So if all went great, you know, you're looking at that kind of timeframe. Obviously, as far as getting approval from the railroad, we've had times where it's pretty easy for them to respond to our work within the right of way permit. Here you go. This is what we needed. We've had other times where if they're putting in their signal equipment, it gets a little bit longer for them to respond and get all that ordered. So just to get them to respond and then to get the equipment ordered, you get another couple of months for, you know, lead times for equipment. So it kind of just depends on the railroad you're working with. But in that instance, when the railroad's not required to do any work, just get flaggers out there. I don't think it's super unreasonable timeframe by the time you get a notice that you're designing it to, hey, we're going to go out there. Can you approve this work within the right of way? You're talking about a couple of weeks for them to respond to that kind of permit, so.
Thank you. Glad to hear. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. I know that this kind of a project is going to impact a lot of people and businesses. And so I wondered if you could help me better understand the public input process that's happened thus far and maybe tell me a little bit about how people or businesses can have input on the actions going forward.
So to answer your question, we haven't had a lot of input so far, only because we've been working through the engineered solutions and just what's in the range of possible solutions at specific locations. So I think normally we work with the Public Information Office. We'll come up with a campaign. I think we'll send, likely send some form of written notice to everyone that lives near the tracks that may be directly impacted by a rail crossing improvement, whether it's 7th or any of the other streets that were listed. Well, also, if there seems to be interest, we can have an open house. Generally, if you don't live immediately adjacent to these crossings, there's probably not a lot of direct impact to you if you just live in the neighborhood. But if you'd like to learn more about some of the notice of intent process and how that works because you're just tired of listening to trains and you live on Ronberg Avenue, we'd be happy to have those conversations. So I think we'll have to explore the level of interest, but definitely direct communication. I think we'll probably, as Brian was saying, it's a little hard to get your head around this in a two-minute conversation. So I think we really just need to sit down, meet with people face to face, explain the process, explain the options that we looked at at their particular location and see if they're amenable to what we're thinking for specific recommended safety improvement.
Thank you. I always think that public input is so important. I'm glad that it's a big part of your plan.
Yep.
Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Sprangler, you mentioned, I didn't want to quote you or anything, but you said something like, this crossing is a little unsafe right now or it seemed to be unsafe. Now, right now, the railroad meets all the safety, the federal safety requirements, correct?
Correct.
All right. And so if we put equipment on, Dubuque does this equipment, and there's some kind of a failure or design failure or the equipment doesn't work, are we liable rather than the more that we add to this? Are we liable at all if there's a problem with the equipment?
I'm not 100% sure on that one, but I mean, it operates similarly to, you know, what's out there today. They're required to maintain the equipment that's out there and in place. And so the way it works is typically, I believe, you, we pay or the city pays for the railroad to maintain that equipment in proper working order every year. So when I was kind of talking about it costs more to maintain a four quad system rather than a two quad system, they're still, it's on their property, so they will maintain it. And actually, it was kind of funny, we were out there doing a diagnostic review and there was something wrong with the equipment. And as we were sitting there talking about it and the federal rail is right here next to us and realizes it's, you know, not compliance, one of the techs from the railroad guy, he was out there adjusting the lights because it kept getting hit by, you know, trucks or things like that. So the city pays for that equipment to be operated in working order, compliant working order, I guess.
And finally, you mentioned there'll be choices, but as long as you, as long as we meet the federal requirements, we're covered, right? I mean, does the railroad go over and above a lot of these requirements to make them more safe, these crossings?
I don't typically, I think on the diagnostic review teams, like if it was outside of a quiet zone, when you're doing a typical project, you'll meet just a similar way out there and they'll all decide what's required here. So as part of that meeting, you know, the state DOTs who's in charge of, you know, compliance for these safety requirements meets out there with the railroad as well. So you've got both parties talking about what's required and when that project gets done, that's how they decide, you know, what goes in there. So I would say, I've run into railroads that aren't on board with, hey, let's just put all this extra equipment in here because it's the safest option because we have to maintain it, you know? We're going to have to deal with it when it stops working and we're going to have to replace it and come out here and deal with it. I've run into some that want no more than you have to put, but I've also run into some railroads that are fairly receptive. It's like, hey, we understand that this is safe and we'll work with you on it. So it kind of depends on a railroad-to-railroad basis, but I'd say in generally, no, there wouldn't, if you were asking the railroad here to put four quadrant gates in everywhere, I don't think they would be super receptive to that idea.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pro Tem.
Ms. Barber.
Yeah, so could you explain to me just a little bit more broadly about the funding authorities and those people involved in helping us fund these recommendations or the draft recommendations for the quiet zones?
As far as the funding authorities, I mean, it's kind of come down to a local level as far as funding these improvements. level as far as funding these improvements. But like I mentioned, there's three federal programs out there that you can apply for. You know, looking at like the Section 130 grant as an example, you know, there's a lot of communities in Iowa that are applying for those grants and it comes down to a cost benefit safety recommendation on which improvements are actually needed the most at each crossing based on safety. So looking at the other federal grants, I don't know as much about them just because they're typically larger projects, you know, like some examples, you know, Davenport was like, I think the only community that received one of those grants last year. There's, I don't remember which one it was, but there was the CHRISI, the Railroad Elimination Program, but you know, it's nationwide, you're only looking at maybe 50 projects that they're funding.
So in your recommendation to us, you will have some options for us, so you'll be able to at least give us a bottom line so that, working with Teri Goodman and her team, we can progress accordingly. And you said the March, February timeframe would be when we would do that, just to give enough time to apply?
Yeah, so in the report, you know, we laid out those different options with the different amounts. And based on your comfort level, you can decide, okay, yeah, it looks like this is the best, safest option as far as reducing that risk and not being concerned that it's going to be disqualified in the future. So you have a general idea of what those are going to cost to know which ones, what grants to go after. And, you know, like Steve mentioned, you know, if you actually want some more details on that strategy, you can probably talk about that, but they've been working with lobbyists and trying to decide what makes sense.
Thank you. I look forward to February, March then. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor Kavanaugh, do you have any comments?
I do. Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation, first of all. I guess my biggest question is an overall one. I'm a little unclear on exactly what the next steps are and whose steps those are. And maybe I'm just missing that. But I guess my question here, and this might be a Mike question a little bit too, you know, so far we've moved forward with this quiet zone study. We've worked with DMATS to get that done. We haven't prioritized it necessarily as a city council in the last few years, but it's still been something that's been on our radar because we have this partnership with DMATS. Is this something that in order to move it forward, we would really have to say, you know, as a council that we need to prioritize this or how are we, how are we working on this moving forward? I guess is the question. What are the, you know, the solid next steps?
This is City Manager Mike Van Meligan. Really up to this point, it's a DMATS project. So Chandra, I don't know if you can come up to the microphone and give any response about the next steps?
So the next steps will be, once we conclude the study, right now we are in discussions with Teri Goodman and the team. The question, what we are looking at is, should we apply to the CHRISI grant, which is going to come as a regional project? Because if I'm FRA, I'll be looking at the project saying what type of railroads are involved, what communities are involved. So our idea is to apply as a region, there is Dubuque, City of Dubuque, Dubuque County and Puyasca, and BNSF, CN and CP will be part of it. So this looks like a holistic approach for the whole regional impact. So that's what we are planning to go for. The next steps will be, obviously, there'll be some discussion with the engineering staff saying what intersection need to be addressed in each community and basing on that, we'll come with cost estimates. And then obviously basing on that, we'll have a grant written and submit it to FRA. But in the meantime, we'll also be looking at grants with Iowa DOT and Illinois DOT for the grade crossing safety improvements. And those are based on when you apply, you'll be in line and you should wait on those. So we'll move on those sides.
So Chandra, the council goal setting would be August of 2024. What's the timeframe for the CHRISI grant application?
So the CHRISI grant will be submitted in spring and we won't be knowing the results until late fall. So, but the DOT grants will be around the same time. So by the time the council walks into goal setting, we'll be submitting all our grants, so.
Wonderful. Mayor Kavanaugh, do you have other questions?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, thank you. That's helpful. So it sounds like we are also, as a council, going to have the opportunity as our, as part of the membership of DMATS to move this forward as well. So that's helpful. One more question that, you mentioned Davenport a couple of times. Are there any other cities in Iowa along the river that have actually implemented quiet zones entirely in a way that we'd be able to look at it to give people a sense of what the costs might be for this and what that process looks like?
Yes, and I don't have the link on the top of my head, but if you do go out to the FRA's website, they maintain a list of all the currently approved FRA or currently approved quiet zones in the country. So you can go see by state, by city, where these quiet zones have been implemented. I can tell you from a couple of the pictures that were in the report, musketeens got one along their river, river run there, kind of through town. We showed a couple of examples of their pedestrian crossings. So like you mentioned, Davenport's trying to put one in. And I know recently we got a couple of calls or we saw a couple of other RFPs from some similar cities, Leclerc and some other communities that are also looking to do something similar. I think Bellevue's got kind of a combination system that's kind of through the regulations partially from a previous law that existed in the city too. So you run into some of those, but for sure, musketeen would be probably the closest really good option to kind of show you what that involves. I know Cedar Rapids is making a pretty big push for their downtown quiet zones right now, so they're kind of in the middle of actually building their improvements through the funding process so that, you can see a lot of the improvements they've done through their downtown corridor. That would be a good example. We showed a couple of pictures of that in town. And then a smaller quiet zone we just implemented maybe a month and a half ago, we finally got it actually designated. We made all the improvements in Hiawatha. And that was kind of the first one in the general central region. And that was a little bit, that was only two or three crossings on the CN line. So that's another recent example that you can see as well. And I think Mason City has also got a quiet zone in north central Iowa. They were one of the examples we talked about had used some of those channelizers as well. So they have a little bit of experience on what's all involved too. So there are some entities out there if you, to reach out to for guidance on those kind of things as well.
Wonderful. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Well, Brian, Jacob, Steve, Chandra and everyone in engineering who have worked so hard on this, thank you so much for your time. And we are going to have a little break before we get started here. So there being no further business, we stand adjourned.